And every time I open that sucker up, it's on the Internet. Why, I don't know. I just push it and stop it, and it goes off. Why it's on the Internet, I have no idea.
Likes it.
Jason makes us all look a little down.
I know.
Looks like I might get a brain injury. That long enough?
Yeah. Just for both of us to trip over.
We're not going to do this.
Meeting comes to order. All right, we need to roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here, Mr. Westwester?
Here.
Mr. Amoraji?
Here.
Mr. Bensy?
Here.
Mr. Fiumas Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Present.
My civil fraction number two, reflection, not fraction, reflection. It'll have to do with pledge allegiance and building of new societies.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have item three, which is the approval of the agenda. Do you have the motion to approve it?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiumas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amoraji?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwester?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item four is the disclosure of conflicts interest concerning. Item five is our public comments. Looks like you're the only one.
It's just giving everybody else a chance. All right. Well, good evening, Bath Township Board of Trustees. I am Emily Stivers. I'm an Ingham County Commissioner representing Northern Meridian Township. That's Haslett right up to the border with Bath. And I'm running for state representative in the new 75th House District. It's an honor to be here tonight, and it's also been an honor serving alongside you throughout the pandemic. We, in just three short years, so much has changed. When a lot of us first came to office, we had times of extreme scarcity, having to make difficult decisions between competing budget priorities. And then during the pandemic, the concerns of our constituents changed, the needs in our communities changed, and the priorities of our local governments changed. We went from an even more extreme time of scarcity, wondering how we were going to keep our constituents alive and safe during an unprecedented pandemic, to now a new time with more money flowing into the state of Michigan and into our local governments than we've ever had in our lifetimes. Through the American Rescue Plan and the incoming infrastructure funding, suddenly we have new possibilities, including reaching every door in Clinton County with fast, affordable, reliable, high-speed Internet, cleaning up our polluting septic systems that have been left far too long. And now suddenly we can clean those up, solve the pollution problems, and support our homeowners who haven't been able to sell their homes because of their septic system crisis. And we have an opportunity to make a once-in-a-generation investment in the futures of our children through our public education system. These are some of the reasons that I'm running for state representative, some of the issues that I want to work with you all to make happen and that I believe that we can make happen, because these aren't partisan concerns. These are things that we can get done. So a little bit about me, I am a bisexual mom. I have two beautiful boys, and they both go to our public schools in Haslett. I've spent six years in the education field, working for a nonprofit that built social and emotional skills curriculum. And then I worked with our educators in the schools to implement this program directly into English language arts curriculum. So I know firsthand just how hard it is on our schools and educators right now, and that's why I'm endorsed by every school board member who's currently endorsed in my race, including almost the entire Okemis and Haslett school boards. I also have a master's degree in public policy specializing in cost-benefit analysis. I'm a policy wonk. I want to get things done, and I want to work with other people to make things happen. And I had a previous career in nonprofit work, lifting up the least advantaged people in the world through the United Nations Foundation. I'm also supported by State Representative Julie Brixie, former State Representative Lynn John Dahl, Meridian Township Supervisor Pat Herring Jackson, Williamson Supervisor Wanda Blumquist, East Lansing Mayor Pro Tem Jesse Gregg, and your own Roads Commissioner Carl Sebold, who happens to be one of my best friends from college where I went to Michigan State. I'm endorsed by the entire Ingham County Parks Commission and almost the entire Board of the Community Mental Health Authority of Clinton, Eaton, and Ingham Counties, where I serve as a board member and have served alongside Dwight Washington, your own county commissioner, who I think would say good things about me if you asked him. And I'm really looking forward to working with you on all of the issues that are important to Bath Township. I think we have a lot of common ground between Bath and Meridian Township, a lot of similar issues. In a lot of ways, our borders, our boundaries are artificial. We have the same concerns about clean water and environment, about the safety of our kids, having safe sidewalks so that they can get to school. That's one of my favorite things that I've heard is that you all are working on here in Bath, and making sure that our communities have their needs met, both economically and in terms of their mental and physical health. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that... Okay. I don't see any county, state, or other agencies, so we put none. Our consent agenda. Anybody have any questions with that? If not, do we have a motion?
I think the motion to approve the consent agenda is for...
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiumas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amoraji?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwester?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
We have approval. Item eight, of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Trustee meeting of March 21, 2022.
Second.
Mr. Fiumas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amoraji?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwester?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
So nine on our agenda is the approval of vouchers.
I'll make the motion to approve the vouchers, yes, for the...
Second.
Mr. Amoraji?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwester?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiumas Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
And item 10, so, well, obviously, your approval of vouchers, you passed. It was approved. So item 10 is your Treasury report, and it says in that...
I have a report. I don't have a written report for tonight, but I just remind everybody tomorrow starts the audit. We've been doing audit prep for quite some time now, seems like forever. Sure, but the audit starts tomorrow. They should be done here on Wednesday. We did move it back from Monday to Tuesday for the start date. Other than that, we've been working diligently, as well as the staff, we're already for. It should be a good couple days. Any questions? Thank you.
Item 11, committee appointments. There doesn't seem to be any. Item 12, township committee reports. None. Unfinished business, item 13. This is your discussion for your 2020 public safety bill. So continue.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. In our last meeting, there were several requests for additional data requested, and one of those items being calls for service and, I guess, number of officers that had been in the department for the police department as well as the fire department. Both of those reports are contained in your packet, as well as, I believe, Chief Lyndon Mulder also included a target number for those being served by the number of police officers that we have. In addition to that, we, trustee Amoraji, requested some information about surrounding communities, and there was a discussion that was had about the most similar community to ours, which is Duett Township. So I went through Duett Township's most recent budget, which is 2022. A lot of good narrative there about villages, their, the fund. They did something very similar to us in which they put their police and fire into a fund prior to the requirement by the state to do so. So they created that fund as well. And in addition, some descriptors of both their police and fire departments, as well as their budget numbers for '22 and the past couple of years prior to those. I have both Chief Lyndon Mulder, Chief David Snyder, and Assistant Chief, Fire Chief Kevin Douglas with us tonight. If you have any questions, they are here to answer those questions. I wasn't sure where the discussion would take us, but hopefully we are prepared for any questions or discussion that you would like to have.
Board members, any questions?
Will you remind us how the ambulance service works in the township?
So we don't, we don't have, as part of our fire department, an ambulance service. We have an ambulance vehicle that we can take to emergency response calls. But once a patient is stabilized and ready to be transported, they are transported by Mercy Ambulance.
But we have a contract with Mercy, right?
I believe that's correct.
Not a contract, Board, just a gentleman's agreement that they will provide service for Bath Township and Duett Township does the same thing?
I thought it was an actual agreement that the Board voted on. Is that not the case?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Because I have one.
Dave, would you break down between the fire runs and the ambulance runs? What the numbers are? Because there's very few fire runs.
As in for last year, the number that you're looking at there?
Yeah.
Break down what we've done for the first quarter of this year, but right now, I don't believe I can. Kevin, close.
So roughly, about every year, we average a little, around anywhere from 200 to 250 fire calls, and then everything else is all EMS-related. We're at a point now where we average 80 to 85% of our call volume is all EMS-related, whether that's somebody having a heart attack, somebody having a stroke, citizen in the township that's slid out of their wheelchair and needs help up all the way to the car accident, and then everything else is structured fires, smoke alarms that are going off, head or arterial type calls, anything like that.
Thank you.
My question's with the police department. That's a segue. That was good. Could you break down, Chief, could you break down your 17, you have 17,983 calls in 2021? Is that right? Did I move the chart right?
Yes.
Okay. Out of that, could you tell me how many were actual civil infractions or misdemeanor infractions or arrests? Basically, let's start with civil infraction. Do you happen to have that?
How many civil infraction tickets were written?
Correct.
Or do you want warnings or...
No, how many were written?
I don't, I don't have that. I don't mean to tell you. I do have my annual report. It's like almost done, so it will be in that, and that'll be to you guys probably in the next week, so you'll see all that in there.
So we get a copy of the annual report next week? Okay. That's before we have to make a decision on what this is. Because the only reason I ask, well, one of the reasons I ask is I'm not seeing any revenue. So obviously, either I'm not looking in the right place, or I haven't been told. Is there a revenue that the police department has besides what, it's like, what, $2,500 or something like that?
Everything that we do comes in, it's done under township ordinance. We get a portion of the fines from the court. That money, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the treasurer probably know better than me, but earmarked for the lifers that...
Yes, usually it is.
Outside of paying...
And retirement from the judges. So everything goes to county. It doesn't come through township as a revenue?
No, those, some of that money goes to the library with penal files.
No, I understand that, but I mean...
They refer to that as. And they gained that status just recently when they became back the last time around when they became a district certified library. I guess that was what you'd call it.
A township library.
That's correct, because before they had that status, they didn't get that. If you look, Duett Township got all that, because that was the closest district library that was. And so that all goes to that, what they do now, what happens to that, same. They have that number. They're separate from us. They are, they are the township library, however, they are separate from us, and that money goes directly to them. It doesn't come to us.
Because it is a public...
That's correct.
So the township itself, what I was trying to figure out was some kind of a revenue that was coming directly to the township. So we need to look for that report.
Still, none of the fines or anything comes back to the township.
Yeah, well, but at least it can break it down, how many were written and what it is.
Yeah, it's always...
Do down your 17,000. Okay. Because what do you think the majority of your 17,000 calls are?
The majority?
Yeah.
I could say it's more patrol, auto unit towards traffic, the business checks, the property checks, all that kind of stuff. Outside of that, you're going to have your domestics and your arsenes or some stuff like that.
The civil infraction issue of the revenue will be broken down. Now it comes in a couple, you know, next week?
It's just to tell you how many tickets were rolled, how many warnings were issued for this year, 2021, is all it's gonna be.
No, that's okay, because that gives you an idea of what revenue the township would initially have, even though it goes to Clinton County or St. John's. And that's what I'm kind of looking for. So every time you write a ticket, if it's written under state law, it's written, obviously, under vehicle code, which is a state issue. If it's written under the township, then it comes to the township. And that's what I guess I'm trying to...
Half the fine goes to township, but that money is still earmarked. It can't be used by you all.
Right. That's not, exactly. That's not a revenue that we have.
It's not a revenue that comes to the...
Yeah. Okay. Nope, that's good. So I'll look for the report next week. Is that correct?
Yeah, everybody will do that.
You'll, you'll most likely get it in your next fourth packet, and they'll come and give us a...
So usually the fourth, the fourth packets, we have a chance to look at it. I mean, we have a couple days.
It usually comes with the packet. They usually come and give a presentation to you at the podium. If you like it when they present, when they give it to us, then we can give it to you.
Okay. No, so that would be like next week?
Whenever he gives it to us.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's appreciated. Okay, I'm going to put down. Okay, nope.
All of the previous reports are online. You can look to look at those.
No, that's fine. I, no, I really want the 2021, 2022 is what I'm looking for. So I'm assuming it'll be 2021s for the year.
Yeah, it'll just be 2021, January 27.
Yeah, that's, no, that's, that's good.
Does it possibly might have been, gentlemen?
I think we're okay for a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was pretty much, because what you're saying, if I'm understanding, oh, and I wanted, I did want to make a comment. Duett budget was really an interesting piece. What I did like most of all was the fact that they have departments that actually gave their report. I don't know that we've ever had department have reports, have we? That we've actually been given what that department feels, not what's in the budget.
We do. We do. We have every year, since, since before you came, since you've become supervisor, whether you've been here a year or not. I don't think we've had less than two since then.
Because I really, really do.
We really, we wanted to get technically, we wanted to split areas here since COVID-19 and all the closing and all Zoom meetings. We haven't had any, I guess it'd be more fair to back up and say, which this takes in your touch here, but you...
But we still have to do a budget.
That's correct.
But our budget didn't have what our departments...
Yes.
We're like, okay, that's...
We've always did that. They've always, every department, every department's always did that since I've been around here. I've been there as long.
You're asking depart, I'm sorry, where you're saying, like, where the department head has it or not?
Yeah, so you say, and they give, which is really an interesting piece. They give 2020 department head. So what that means, obviously, is what that department submitted to budget.
You see that one, you see that one, I submit the, my budget recommendation to you?
Right. That's not, that's your interpretation of what...
No.
What I'm asking is...
There's a department head. Line I, there's a lot, there's a whole column of what the department has asked for and whether I have approved that or not.
So that's what you call, not amended, but it's requested, and then you have, like...
My recommendation.
Your recommendation. So we don't actually, but we don't actually see it, what the department writes up.
You see it, it's in there.
What you're seeing there, because they have the same accounting software we do, is that's in the software.
Okay.
And the department head is actually what the chief department head, I'm the department head of the treasurer's department. So I fill out one of them, same as what the fire department would, the police department would, the building department, everybody just got one. They actually take and fill that out, and that's what their request is, department head request.
It's one of the first budgets you see and it's listed in there.
Okay, let me try. The piece of paper that the chief's fill out, that says, this is what my department wants.
That's in your first budget that you get from me.
But that's interpreted by...
It's the exact thing that they request, and then the next...
We just don't, we just don't get the hard copy.
No.
Okay, okay, that's...
It's done, it's done. Everybody has access to BSNA software, so that, and they're able to, they can get in there if they choose to particularly fill it out under the BSNA software.
But I usually go in and fill out their numbers, and then I will, in the next column, in the next column, I'll either agree with them or disagree with them and make it higher, lower.
Okay.
And that's where my recommendation comes from.
So what it is, is that on the BSNA form, they fill out, they being department heads, fill out what it is their department, what they feel their department should receive. Then you in turn determine that you either agree or disagree. But all we see is what the number is. We don't actually...
Just like this right here, yes. That's what you get, department head number.
That's, but it's not the hard copy.
It's not a written copy. It's a professional-generated computer copy. That's one of them.
Nope. I've just never seen one. That's what I didn't know.
You print out a hard copy for each of us as we work through, right?
Oh, the budget.
Yeah, so that's what she's saying. It's the same thing.
Okay, what I, no, what I'm saying is the actual budget. So if I have access to BSNA's computer, then I should be able to pull up, for example, what Chief Snyder said that he wanted or he needed from the department.
I have to hand key that in.
Oh.
It's at the bottom of the report.
No, no, I understand. I've got, I've got that with me, so I, I sat in on it. I understand that.
Do we get everything that the department heads give, give you? Okay.
And I'm, and all I'm saying is, I've never seen what the actual department, only what you have put down, and I understand that. But I'm, what I guess I'm saying is, I want the hard copy. If I have access to it, he can print it off, if that's what he does, then that's not an issue. It's not an issue anyway. It's just a matter of, I've never seen, and I liked theirs, and I know ours has that, but I've not seen hard copy of what it is, and that's all I'm asking for. So I'll know that next time around.
Technically, I don't mean to speak out of turn, but I think we might go in the speaker room a little bit. Technically, Karen, Karen, Karen has taken it to the next level. When I came back here in '16, I did mine on, mine on BSNA software. For a while, and I turned it into supervisor, Latisha, Dan Latisha, and he laughed at me and said, I don't like doing Excel. I don't do that. He said, I like doing it on Excel, and so we do it all on Excel. I said, well, you're not going to give it to me in the right way, and you're going to do it on BSNA. And actually, Karen came to me, because we did that, and we actually sat down with BSNA software and we had a training session. So everybody was doing it on BSNA, so we didn't, so we got away from the mass amount of papers and Excel spreadsheets and everything. So we had all that information choreographed and outlined it right there, so we knew what it was, instead of dealing with all these spreadsheets. And then, so we've actually taken this for '20 and '21, I believe '20 was your first one you did, and '21 was the second one that you did. And we've actually taken it to the level where we're at, matching what you had there in the township, which it wasn't being done that way before.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, all of our department heads go to BSNA and fill out what it is that they want? No?
She can print them off a sheet, and they can fill it out at that point in time and have, he can, if that's the case, with some of our bigger departments, I think the chief does his. And some, some of them do it and do the whole thing, some of them don't do the whole thing. But this is a, I would say it's a kind of a learning process. It could be intimidating, I guess, if you've never worked with it before. I had, obviously, years of working with it, so that's why I chose the way I do it. But this is better, the way it's done, because technically, and it's actually the superintendent's decision, and it's her, it's her responsibility by the way their contract, usually ours, actually is with the superintendent and everything that they can have it the way she wants it. Dan Latisha wanted it on Excel. Karen Melbrenz, the way I did it, she liked it, and she liked the way it was being computer-oriented, so that's, that's the way we went with that. We got old and we got new. But Dan wasn't, by no means was no slouch. I mean, he knew, he was pretty sharp to do the numbers, but I think that was just, that was just, he didn't want one more thing to have to learn. I didn't like it, but I went out and I kept doing mine the same way. She seemed how I did mine, and that's how we ended up with it.
So you're saying you don't, you, you, when I hand key their, their numbers and their notes in, you, you don't want to see that?
Oh, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I have a hard copy. Not a big deal.
Well, you have your hard, you have your hard copy? You, you're, you're, you're a department. You're supposed to have a...
Yes, I am. But it's given to me.
Did you fill your budget out?
No.
Well, you need to do that. You need to learn how to do that.
That's what I want, a hard copy of all the departments that are filling, whether it's on the computer or not. That's great.
So I'm just, I'm curious. Are you, are you asking about just a budget, or are you asking about an annual reports that may include financials?
No, nobody said anything about annual report. What I'm saying is, when the budget is submitted...
Karen, thank you.
Nope. Any other, just hopefully, now I know if I can go to BSNA, I can find some of them. Next time for budget 2023, I will know and you'll know that I'm looking for the hard copies of what it is that's being submitted. Granted, I have the numbers. I understand that, but I'm looking for these old-fashioned pieces of paper that, you know, if that's what I need to do to request it, do I need to put it right to request it just to remember?
No, just at that time, you can just request it.
Okay.
What are, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for anything. I just want to see.
But she gives it to us. But she gives it to us. I didn't say you had to, I'm just asking what you're looking for to better understand what it is you're asking about.
Okay, better understanding is I'm looking for a hard copy.
Right, but she gives us the information.
Yes.
Are you not trusting what she gives us?
No, that's, do you?
I do, yes.
Okay, great, and that's, I'm, I'm going to please to do, and I think she does, I don't, I don't think that's an issue. All I'm saying is, I would like to have a hard copy.
Okay.
That's all.
It's an extremely busy time of year, so.
That's all I'm asking.
It would just be helpful if you just remind me that's what you're looking for.
When do they do their budgets?
In like July and August.
Okay, so they, so our department heads supply budgets for 2023 in July or August.
Correct.
Okay. Fine, that's. Okay.
That could be, because mine is due to you by the beginning of September, so.
Okay, nope, that's, I'll send a reminder just so.
Thank you.
No, so that's good. Okay, another discussion. On the May, currently for the safety.
I will need, you have one more meeting in April.
Right.
I believe our materials due to the county by May 10th, if I'm correct. So, if there is a feeling, we will have May 2nd, will be your last meeting in order for us to look at ballot language, look at anything to do with the, with the mileage. I'm sorry for you.
Yeah, all of this has to go to the board.
It does.
Right. So, on May 2nd, we have enough time to get it to them, get review.
It'll be a quick turnaround, but.
It'll be a quick turnaround, okay, well.
I prefer to have, I would prefer to have a, a decision at the next meeting, but it, that's really up to all of you, if you still have more talking and more that you need to do, then.
I'm just emphasizing there is a time construct.
So, would it be, would it be fair at this time, I'm not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm saying, May 2nd, we still have one more meeting prior to that.
You have April 18th.
That's right.
And May 2nd. Um, but I have to make sure our ballot language is, is accurate to what you're trying to do and that the numbers are correct.
Okay.
Is there a feeling in this room, one way or another, whether we are going to increase this, or are we going to run a renewal? Is, is, I, I'm not getting a sense of, of direction to what to bring you next time. Are we simply just running a renewal?
Oh, thank you. Never looked to my left shoulder.
Yes, trust me.
I continue to recommend that we do an increase as a separate second vote, and we run a renewal as an independent first vote, to be able to offset some of the costs that we're subsidizing these departments. I'm not interested in cutting the departments in the future.
I'm not sure that's cutting.
I didn't say it was, I said I'm not interested in cutting in the future.
So, a renewal would be a cutting?
I am not interested in cutting in the future.
I'm for the renewal of, you know, with our chief department, and I'm in favor of doing it in November, a one-time shot, because that engages the whole community in their chances and what it is that they'll be supporting or not supporting. So if you're looking for double language, you're looking for one to renewal or two to increase, then it'll have to be worded in such a way that people understand that, yes, they're gonna do a renewal, or no, they're not gonna do an increase, or yes, they're gonna do an increase, and no, they don't want a renewal.
Well, it, it's, how you would, you would either decide to do the increase on top of the renewal, or a new mileage?
Yeah.
I do understand that, it's a new mileage.
Right.
Or you would run them separately, and you would have the renewal and a smaller increase set, run separately, so they could choose to not vote in favor of the renewal, but they, or the new, but they could still approve the renewal.
So you're looking with a, right, trust me.
Can't you do the opposite, though?
Yeah.
Vote for the, the increase but not the renewal?
Run that chance, yes, but if you run them together as one, you, you, I, I think you can run more of an, of an increase of, of them slapping it out.
I don't think you can run it as one, kidding.
Sure you can.
A renewal plus an increase?
Two separate, yes.
No, it's two separates, not as one.
You can do one, or you can do two. You can do your renewal plus, which makes it a new, right, you can do the renewal plus some new. Two separate issues.
Yes, then it's two separate issues, and the voter has to understand that there's two separate issues.
One's a renewal and one's a. Yes, sir.
Uh, Dave, how many firemen do we have at this moment?
Currently, we're at 17.
We're at 17?
And do we hire the full-time folks?
No, they have not been hired yet.
Will that put us in at 19?
Probably not, it would still put us at 17.
Okay.
Currently, we're gonna look too higher from within.
Okay.
To make it easier for training.
Yep, that makes sense, thanks.
Dave, are you counting the two new people who just got licensed?
Do we just get licensed?
Yeah, or are there some people in training that, that they just get licensed?
No, 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 we're not counting those, we have two new people that have just joined the department with no training, but we're counting those.
Okay.
But, and we have one more, hopefully they will be joining us, so we'll be at 18, but.
Okay, thank you.
So that's two full-time or part-time?
Currently, there's one and a half, is what we currently have on staff.
Is one full-time and one half-time?
One full-time, one half-time, correct.
So you will end up with three full-time and a half-time if you get your two people?
Correct.
Right, okay. Well, for a township citizen that had you gentlemen come over and help my folks an awful lot of times, uh, and when I was giving my father-in-law mouth-to-mouth resuscitation, you guys got there in a hurry. And I know it would have been quicker if you could have had somebody here at the building just to leave, but I sure appreciate you.
That's a ditto. I think that's true. All right, is there any other? Okay.
I just want to weigh in here, I would really recommend to the board that you run the mileage at the first election, that way if we have trouble, we could always run it again. I don't see us having trouble, but it's just good business to run this election that way, it's just my opinion.
I agree with that.
I disagree with that, but that's okay.
With the number of write-in, with the number of people that get their ballots sent to them.
Well, that's a question that I had for the, the ones who would be on vacation, which is part of the reason you run things in August, is because you run things in August, people are usually gone in that time. So November, they're more engaged, they're more there as to what's happening. So, now that we are able to do our absentees in a better form, and they have to ask for them, so it's an educational process, knowing that they'll have to be understood to ask for a volunteer, or, not volunteer, to ask for the voting absentee vote. Thank you. The absentee, I always appreciate that, the absentee vote, so that people that are educated enough to ask for it, when they go on vacation, they fill it out and they send it in. Is that, okay. Does that make sense or not?
No, but that's okay.
No, that's okay. No, you're taking my words. All right.
Any sense of whether you would like this to come back as an action item or a, a discussion item for further discussion?
Hey, it's be an action item. We haven't got much time.
Yep.
Let the people decide what they want.
If you're done correctly here, there's a lot that has to happen.
Okay.
It needs to be an action item.
For, that would be for the end of April?
April 18th, yes.
I have no problems with it being an action as long as there's no notification, and that we can now have the discussion before that actually takes a vote. So I don't see.
Thank you for your guidance. I appreciate it.
Yep.
With us.
All right, we're still on 13, only now we've got items for action, so we'll be taking some votes. Comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Um, at the, as you recall, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about how the comprehensive plan unfolded and the actions that we took, and whether or not we were taking the right steps at the right time. And, um, after, after we had our vote to approve the comprehensive plan, trustee Elmarigi shared some information and, which caused the planner, myself, and the chair of the planning commission to take a good look at the process that we went through, and I do believe that trustee Elmarigi was correct, and that we did miss some steps in the process. So as of tonight, and thank you to you for helping us through that process, we've, we've been between a couple of planners, so I think that that was very crucial for you to identify where we fell short. Um, I am asking you for two action items that were, um, in the packet, and the recommendation, the first motion that I asked you for was to rescind your approval of the previous comprehensive plan that you did at the last meeting. And the second action that I'm asking you for is to approve distribution and set a limit on the amount of time that we take, the planning commission can take comments to 42 days, that can be changed up to. There were two different timeframes. I think the, um, 60, it can be up to 63 days, but MTA recommends 42, so, um, I use the 42 days here in this, in this motion recommendation. Um, but we need to take these actions so that we're, we're sure to do this correctly.
Any questions? Okay, the only question I have is, can you do the 42 days, is that a statutory requirement, or is that, so it's statutory law? So I mean, state law or township law?
State.
So you'd have to go to the state to request the change, right?
No, no, not requesting change, I'm applying with the state.
So he's, the statute says either 42 or 60, so they give you a choice?
It's still free, because we're doing an amendment to existing comprehensive, and it's ready to, and that, that's clarified by Michigan Township Association.
No, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, is, that's not a statutory requirement, that's a township requirement?
No, it is a statutory requirement.
The 42 days?
Yes.
And we're falling within the 42 days, not the 60?
We're trying to, yes.
Gotcha. All right, so we have a motion for recommendation one, that you are going to rescind your resolution that was adopted on, she said, 21, for 2021, 2026 comprehensive plan, and it was adopted apparently in March 21st. So we're looking for a motion?
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why are we doing this again?
So we did not correctly come to the board and ask for the board to direct the, um, the sharing of our plan for comments.
But you're gonna do it.
We're gonna go back and do that. I'm asking you to rescind your adoption of the comprehensive plan, and I'm asking you to direct the planning commission to share the plan and take comments for up to 42 days.
And then it'll come back to us again?
And then I'll come back to you again for approval.
Okay, all right.
We missed a stop.
The statute is very unclear, just for the record.
It always is.
I'll make a mo, uh, motion to adopt, to rescind the adoption of the 2021 to 2026 comprehensive plan.
Second. Second, okay. Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fugus Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmarigi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second motion, I'm sorry, I was gonna say.
Would mean to rescind.
Distribution, yes, the resolution, so we don't have that anymore, so it's been, so figured, speaking as we send it, so now we go into your recommendation two, number two, which is also deals with approving the distribution of the proposed plan. Is there any question? Okay, you?
Sure, I'll make a second motion. I move to approve the distribution of the comprehensive plan, uh, to adjacent municipalities and other entities as required by statute.
Second. Thank you. So be 42 days?
Yes.
Okay, 42 days, I appreciate it. Ms. Butler Challenger, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fugus Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping me correct this, and, and thank you for your patience.
Okay, that is clear with that. All right, the next one is, Deputy Superintendent, you're gonna provide to us again the visual public meetings under the Michigan Public Meeting Act and the American Disabilities Act.
Uh, yes, so, um, this is the same document that I provided to you last week, so nothing has changed, based on the information provided or my recommendations, but if you have any further questions, I can answer those.
Anybody have a question? Okay, my question, when is that you do this, understanding from what the statements have been made before, that everyone looks at these and understands that we're asking 10,000 even though it comes to four, and we've already explained why, you know, that's been done. So, what I've been asking, you're gonna love this, is an itemized bill, what it's gonna cost for the shipping, what it's gonna cost for IT people. We already have the itemized list for the $4,800 for the equipment, so it's just adding to that, so that we know how much the shipping is and how much the IT people cost, because that's what you said was two of your items that you didn't know.
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm asking is that there be a written bill, written statement that says.
There would be a written bill once that is paid.
Okay, so you will already have given to us what it is that it's gonna cost for us to pay our IT people, and what it's gonna cost to ship this equipment.
I have not provided that to you because I do not know what that will be yet.
Exactly.
So that is why I'm, I am requesting up to $10,000, because that will cover that cost.
That's what I'm asking.
Do you want that?
I don't.
Do you want that before you vote?
No, after it's, because I, I agree with what you're, you're doing. The question is, that we didn't know what it would cost the IT people, we didn't know what it would cost for shipping.
Sure.
From what the statements have been made here before, everyone reads these, so if there's a contingency for another $4,000, well, of course, it's gonna cost $4,000 because we've figured that into our budget, does that make any sense? So what I'm looking for is exactly what it's gonna cost us.
Once I have that figured out, after this is approved, if it is approved?
Correct.
I can provide that, I can receive that.
Nope, that's, that's all I, all right, anybody have any other? All right, we need a vote?
We have to have a motion for.
Yes, we do. That's what I'm asking, is somebody gonna motion that we do it, so we can have a vote, or are you not gonna vote yet?
I move to offer us, I, I, the purchase and installation of equipment to support 88 clients in our meetings, for a total not to exceed $10,000.
Second. Now, does that mean it won't be a bill?
No.
Okay, guys, whatever you want to do. All right, can we take a vote on that? Do we have a second?
Yes, you got a second down there.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fugus Bliss?
No.
Mr. Elmarigi?
Yes.[1756.32]
Mr. Benzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
No.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler Challenger, no.
All right, so that motion didn't pass for us to have the equipment as well as the bill to understand what it was, what the cost was gonna be. Okay. So we will go to our third, which is the expansion of the newly formed recreational advisory committee. Now, that one was mine. Now, what I had questioned with it was, and I received the feedback, which I understood feedback from people, that one more advisor person would not have been enough. One more independent would have made it an even number. So I'm looking for an amendment to be able to say there are two independent people that would be added to this, so we would have eight members, and then, of course, your board of trustees. Right now, we have three that have been added or have requested for this. We had a fourth one, but she wasn't one of the three. Three from Farmers Market, three from recreational, she was kind of the independent, what she was. So we actually have three. We have two from Farmers Market and one from the, the old Park and Recreation to make this recreational advisory committee. So what I'm amending is to request that there be two independents, so we'd have eight, and then your board of trustees would be none. Do I need a se, I need a second?
Are you making a motion that we add?
Motion to add two, that's correct.
Support.
Uh, uh, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. We need to do, you better stand up one of each other.
I need a little bell for you.
Yeah.
Or banging on it, whatever.
Yeah, I continue to think we don't need more than seven people. I don't think there will be acrimony between the board members. I think we will end up appointing new people who have never been on either board because we won't have enough people from one or the other to field a full six people plus the board member. So rather than setting the board up expecting that there's going to be some sort of rift between the sides, I'd rather set them up that there's going to be collaboration between community members.
I don't necessarily think there's going to be a rift.
Your letter says there is.
People keep saying, well, it says the purpose of it is so that you'll have, you don't put them in a position of, when a, when a situation comes or a program comes, you're not putting them in a position of falling down lines, political lines, if that's the way you wanna look at it. And then, of course, one decision has to be made with the one person. And I know it was mentioned to me that it would be better not to do this, to let them fail, for like the better word, or to have a problem with that, than literally say, okay, you guys can't agree, so now I'm gonna add two people. From my standpoint, I would rather do that at this point when it's brand new, so that there isn't the contention of any sort that's going to be there. I didn't organize this, so when I see that there's three and three from either committee, I'm not, I've never been in favor of this, that has to be known, and that's not a secret by this act. So my purpose is to add the independent people who did not have anything to do with Farmers Market, did not have anything to do with Park and Rec, and come into this recreational advisory committee, that's all. And I, I understand what you're saying, but that's not the point. The point is to make it a better community committee than it is to attempt to bring two together. So, anyway, there's, there's been seconds, so go ahead and discuss.
Yeah, we're, it's been seconds.
Yes.
I support a seven-member board also, three from Farmers Market, three from the recreation or general community, and a board member. I think those people have the right, I have a board member sit with them at every meeting.
Oh, no question, nobody ever said add.
So I, I'm, I'm supporting the seven.
So you... Okay.
So we've taken two separate committees of fourteen members, and we've combined them into one committee with seven members. I, I support nine just because I think that based on the nature of the farmers markets and recreation, that volunteers are incredibly important, and this is a powerful tool to ensure that we have more members who are volunteering than, than fewer.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, other than the fact that we haven't had fourteen members for a long time, long time. Because I was told that it was not important to do, so therefore, you know, add to them. That was my fault, and that was, that was my ignorance in not questioning much sooner than what I did to add more people to the Park and Recreation. So now, what I'm saying is we now have this committee, this recreational advisory committee, and I'm still supporting, so we can take a vote, I understand where everybody's coming from. So I'm asking for an amendment, so you can give a support, a second, it's been done, so we've had a discussions, now we take a vote.
Okay, so you want to approve the expansion of the recreational committee from eight?
From seven to eight.
Seven to nine.
Well, it would be, yes, you'd have one board member, you'd have eight members but one.
It'd be nine.
Mr. Fugus Bliss?
No.
Mr. Elmarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzi?
No.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Oh.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, no. Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
So that expansion from two members, the amendment fails, so now we will go to new business. And that's item fourteen, for those that are following this, and we have a discussion on resolution for, I think it's solicitation, to have just sit away and go through all that, it's much appreciated work, thank you so much. All right. So this resolution apparently is a discussion, so there we go.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and trustees. I'm here on behalf of the SCUMA board as we look towards the future of SCUMA and our customer communities to support their continued growth. We're looking to submit an SRF project plan, of which I believe you all folks have a spreadsheet that ultimately laid out all the potential costs related to the project plan as it being submitted. Also, a memo should have been supplied as well in your packet, highlighting the different areas we're looking to address. Thank you. Ultimately, what we're looking to do is, this is a long road, and I'll give you a quick synopsis of how we got here, because I know I brought this up at the past couple budget talks, but ultimately, SCUMA's board looked to consultants. Through a QBS process, we selected a consultant that we felt best fit our needs in our group. We looked to create a facilities plan that would encompass all four municipal districts' future growth for twenty years. With that being said, that was commenced a little over two years ago and quickly raised some serious concerns, and that's related to our capacity. We knew some of them concerns existed, although our operational experience showed some of that not to be a concern as related to some of the mathematic formulas that we worked out. With that being said, any project that SCUMA would do, a part forty-one has to be submitted to Eagle. Eagle uses a ten-state standard formula to justify any sizing of any of the particular tank structures, pumps, et cetera. And that's where our concerns came in. Basically, our entire plant had to be rebuilt based on the ten-state standards. That initial cost estimate two years ago was thirty-four million dollars. That was a rather scary number, and one that did not reflect, again, our operational experience. So we quickly asked, how can we prove our position, our true accurate position outside of the ten-state realm? So we met with Eagle on many, many meetings, of course, it's all through COVID, so it was even tougher, but we had many Zoom meetings, and we got to the hierarchy where they felt a model would justify an operational experience outside of simply me saying, hey, we're not seeing this, how can we prove that besides me showing you a picture or something else? So we had a model built by some of the best in the industry. We used a multitude of different subconsultants, and Dr. Greiger from U of M, who is one of the foremost experts in modeling wastewater plants. The model created a very, very accurate snapshot. We did lots of testing and comparisons, and that model proved our operational experience, and one that showed that we had more capacity with, with inside our structures, one higher than the ten-state standards. So then we got Eagle to the table, and they too agreed to that. With that being said, we, we got them to, to agree to a conservative six MGD number, because right now, our plant is rated for five MGD. There is some very, there's some significant buffer in that six MGD, but Eagle was semi-reluctant to go much farther than that, as we were the first to ever complete this process, so they wanted some comfort zone in that too. But with that being said, the six MG got us far into the future, far beyond the six, the twenty-year projections for all growth between four municipalities. So that brings us full circle to where the SCUMA board then commenced a design of what would be actually needed for that plant. Keep in mind, the SCUMA plant has been untouched since its inception of nineteen eighty, okay? If you, if you bring that full circle, a lot of BASS system was built in the seventies. Your large two-on-one station that was rebuilt in two thousand and eleven was built in nineteen seventy-four, so we're thinking along the same timeframe. Our, our plant has been, again, untouched, all that equipment for the most part has been untouched, which shows you how important our staff's continued input and maintenance has been to that plant. And it's in good shape, it, it's, it's a beautiful piece of equipment, but it's, it's, we can only fix things so long. So we just felt that this SRF plan was our best option to possibly get principal forgiveness, as most of our communities would not be, be able to accept or be qualified for some type of disadvantaged community status or traditional grant process. So with all the federal funds funding, funneling into the state, they've already stated that they're gonna be trying to push those through the SRF program. This will come in principal forgiveness, possibly lowering the interest rate of the loan. And I, I gotta say that this is in no way committing SCUMA to this particular project at this particular time. This is all part of the process. If we submit a successful project plan and are selected, say in twenty-three, then this all comes back. We'll be bitted out, and we'll be reevaluating that. The economic circumstances we are in right now makes it very hard to accurately predict what these costs are gonna be. So what you have in front of you on that spreadsheet is the six point, sixteen point four million for the highlighted projects across the top. That's what we project as a worst-case scenario at this time. But that being said, it, it's hard to tell. To put that in perspective, I know you know that the Clint-Kai Road Commission recently submitted a project, they bonded, I believe, at two point nine percent is what their bonding rate was. SRF is one point eight seven five and two point one respectively, so extremely competitive interest rates, far better than the bond market. But their project came back, I believe, twenty percent over. Murdy and, I'm not sorry, Delta Township just opened bids, they had a project estimate for a new plant at fifty-three million dollars, came back at seventy-three million dollars. So these are staggering numbers and rather concerning, but one that we felt we've accurately planned for, but time will tell. If we'd like to go through that spreadsheet, I'd be happy to do that and answer any individual questions you may have. I can happily go through that memo more directly as well, I just wanna make sure I'm thorough enough for you folks to be comfortable with, with the process here. Again, we're just looking for support in this project as a community.
Just prior to going over the spreadsheet, I know that there will be an increase, obviously, if we're going from five to six MGD, what does that mean for BASS Township in terms of REUs? Will we gain REUs, and how many would we gain?
You would. As, as your ownership percentage, BASS Township owns sixteen point seven two, seven three percent of the capacity, that would equate to seven hundred and ninety-eight REUs with that project. And at that sixteen point four number, as you can see on that spreadsheet, BASS portion would be three point eight seven four, and that's a combination of both process and plant ownership values. You can see BASS process numbers for twenty twenty-two would be twenty-seven point two one percent of annual flows at SCUMA. So obviously, a very significant portion of the flows. Again, this, it is felt that the SRF program is our best option as a community partner to get any level of principal forgiveness we might be acceptable to. It potentially also, it will help BASS SRF project if they do move forward with their other SRF project and the disadvantaged community portion as well, it sounds like that could be tied into that.
Could, we have a second question, but yeah. So Treasurer Wiswasser and I have talked a great deal about this, and I know the last time that we bonded, we were not able to invest our funds to gain interest on that money. If we were to upfront pay SCUMA for all of our costs related to this project, which would be three point eight seven four million dollars, are you able to invest that money for an interest return?
To be honest with you, I am obviously not a bond attorney, and that'd be a great question for them. I would say likely not, due to the fact that that number is gonna have to come, that number's reflected back in your own audit. So even though it's housed at SCUMA, it would still be used as an asset of the townships, just like any, any other money's held for BASS Township. So I, I would assume not, but that'd be a great question for a bond attorney.
Okay.
I have a question. We weren't able to invest the bond money until the project was over? We weren't allowed to do that?
No, we're not allowed to invest bond money, period. Certain bonds that you bond for, and all the bonds I've ever been involved in, I think I've been involved, we talked about, about every bond that we were at here for the sewer system. You're not, you're, the construction bond is going to a separate account, you keep a separate tally for it, and you have to take and show that you, what you utilize that money for, oh, throughout the bond process, the project process. What you're doing here is something totally different because of what we've ever done for. The township has never had debt, other than bonds. It's very rare, a lot, most municipalities, these municipalities this size do carry some debt. The only other debt we've ever had was we had a small debt to the building authority for a brief period of time where we built a new fire station down over the hill. But here's the thing, this is gonna be a thirty-year, because it's an SRF project, that means you have to run it, and it's my understanding of these, the full amount of time for the full thirty years, it has to be ran out and paid for, and there's no early payoff for this. So that means if you're gonna, the township obviously is gonna have to bond and come up with the funds to take and pay for this, so that means that these are gonna be held here, and we have, we have, it'll be our decision as far as what our cash flow needs are and everything else, or how we wanna pay for it. We have several different ways we can pay for it, as you laid out, whether we wanna do monthly, we wanna do annually, or whatever. I mean, if you do it an annual, things a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three point four eighty-eight, that is written today for a thirty-year, oh, no. So that, that's my concern, and I think that it's gonna be different because of that. I, I don't wanna disagree with you, but I, I'm looking forward to talking to Miller Fanfield and Andy Campbell from, from Baker Tilly and whatnot, and I think that's the next step. I'm, I'm probably a little bit anal about this, I think I did everything to stand on my head for Karen to tell, get her attention, to make sure that we know this, because what you're doing here by agreeing to this tonight, what you're signing onto, and I'm very familiar with what we're doing here, because I was a member of that authority for too many years, but a board member, but they're protecting themselves and they're doing good business by getting this thing upfront and getting the money secured, and we gotta go get our money to take and pay for this. And what I wanna know, as Treasurer, is I wanna know, I'm not an authority member here, I stepped away from that halfway through the year for this purpose, right here, because I, I have to represent the taxpayers of BASS in this, because this is huge, this is the biggest thing, sewer business BASS I've done, in my opinion. But the, the, I wanna know what, what our options are for funding, but when we set down to fund this, when we talk to Baker Tilly, Miller Fanfield, Robyn Council, and others, I wanna know exactly what we can do with these funds, because if we can give these funds to you, just as you have done with all our other CIP funds and everything else through the years over there for our municipality, we get paid at a percentage rate of whatever they are that's held over there in that particular line item, and we make interest money on this. If we're not able to do that there, but if we're able to do it here at home, then obviously it's gonna be different how we're gonna pay for this. This is a, a small piece... This is a, a small piece of money. This is $3.8 million forward for years. The advantages, it's us checking the interest rate, and there's, my understanding and reading all this is that there's a chance for it to be principal forgiven, which helps us as well. But like it or not, you're here for 30 years. And you're, you're, there's a lot of people stuck in this room right here that's not going to be here 30 years from now, and somebody's going to be paying the bill to do this, and that bothers me.
It's a morbid way to look at it.
My time, I spent 13 years over there, I've spent 20 years here, and, and my time is limited, I'm at the end of my time.
Sure.
And I want, I don't want, I told Brenda today, I told Brenda today, when we talked about this, I, I'm not interested in leaving a legacy, we're probably interested in making sure that we see where we're going with this and what's going to get done. I laugh because we're, we're going to pay, we know this is normal, what we do. We're, I heard you say just a minute ago, it came to my attention, that this is a 20-year guarantee for the, for the system, and, and, but we're going to pay for it for 30 years. So that means 10 years of this, the system's going to be out of it.
You're right. And, and if you put that in perspective, I mean, talking like that, that's, of course, an insurance table prediction. But keep in mind, when SCUMA was built in 1980, in that original contract, it said it would have to be rebuilt 20 years later. And here we are 43 years later. You could, we're only going to really predict so far accurately, and that can change tomorrow. If one of our communities ultimately come in with some large industrial project, let's take, for instance, St. John's Cheese Factory comes in. Who knows? That changes everything instantly as far as flows go, right? We instantly shoot through the roof, and we've got to, we've got to quickly move through that process as well. What we do know today, and I want to be clear, is, is SCUMA will have to move forward with some level of a project, and this is absolutely critical. And at this point, our best option for any chance of principal forgiveness, and that's key. We don't have to move forward if we ultimately bid this project out and it's far exceeds our, our predictive amount, and/or we don't get the principal forgiveness. We'll have to recome, we'll have to come back, recalibrate, think this out. But we want to be far enough ahead that we'll have those options to rethink it back out. Because if we wait too long, ultimately, we won't have options. We'll just be forced to do it. And that's something, we, we know that's not in our best interests of our communities, because that's when it gets real costly.
Okay. So, go ahead. I know you've visited with the other municipalities, and we're scheduled for action on our resolution at the next board meeting. Have the other municipalities already approved or disapproved of?
Dewitt Township has submitted their approval and committed a resolution. Watertown Township has as well. Next Monday, I will be at the City of Dewitt.
Okay.
Presenting the same information as I am with you folks tonight.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to come back on the 18th. If needed, it absolutely would not be a problem. Again, we're, we're looking for that community support. We want to go into this, understand, everybody has a different financial position. Everybody has a different position in their sewer system. And it, we want to try to be out ahead of this, and we're thinking as a worst-case scenario, okay? But we don't ultimately know until we get that bid back on bid day, what the true impact is going to be. But we want to make sure that you guys are ready and prepared and thinking, every, all the information you need to think about, what you're going to have to do as a community to address the issues at hand in the future.
Mr. Treasurer, you can say his hand up first.
Um, we own 16.7273% of the usage of the plant.
Yes, sir.
How close are we to not being able to build in BATH Township because we are pushing too much to you?
Uh, great question. It fluctuates on an annual basis.
Defensive reins or not?
Yes. Interest enough, BATH does not go up and down quite as bad as the other communities. But I believe, don't take this gospel, but last I checked, you had about 1,000 REUs left. Was that about right? We had that conversation.
I think that-
I think it's 300, isn't it?
What, what's the steer in this one make you, 1,000?
Yes. Does, does make some 1,000.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So Treasurer Wisswasser, you have very adeptly told me several times that we are outvoted at SCUMA. So whether we approve the project or not, we could lose a vote if we'd wanted to not do this project and we'd still have to do it. If we were outvoted, not saying that that's a case that's going to happen, but if we were outvoted, would this be the best way to move forward in financing?
Yes. Both answers are, oh, there's two questions, yes. You already have been outvoted. When the township voted for, you were outvoted.
I was counting the votes, yes.
But I mean, that, that's the first answer, the first question, and, and the authority today, with that being said, and I'll answer your second question, but let me just say the authority today, what I found in going back in the six months I spent there is different than what it was for a long time. Communities get more competitive, things, money's tighter, inflation's bigger, cost are more, and shoot, look at that. That's why I asked, I, I called and asked for this spreadsheet, and he emailed it to me, and we, we had some good conversation on it. But that, that's why Dewitt wants to do this this way, because it's good. Now, look at the money they got to spend over there at 50, 55% ownership. I mean, they got to spend a lot of money over there compared to us. We're the second largest. And then you look at the processing, we're even bigger yet. And so to answer your question, yes, this is good, and it's hard to stomach. I had a hard time with it all weekend. I, I thought about it all weekend long. We got, I felt better today. We, we, Brenda and I sat and talked, and Brenda talked with us, and we talked about it. But this is the best move going forward. Now we need to do the next step, though. We need to go forward, and we need to see along our funding here, and we need to bond for this. I'll give you some rough numbers. I, I looked at it, and I'm going to look at, if you take your 22 budget, and you all have one, if you look at our revenues and our expenditures for the sewer fund, you're about $107,000 to the good, and you've got $213 million in expenditures, that you add them all up, and you have, or 2, 2 million to 13,000, 2,134,4659 in expenditures, a good thing with Treasurer. And that's, you know, that, that's what that means, is you've got about $107,000 to the good at the end of the year for what you take in, what you're projecting you're going to take in versus what you're going to spend. At any given time, you can have a problem, as we've seen in the last few years with the sewer system, that can cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions. So it's a very fragile animal that we look at. Our sewer fund, fund balance, which you're going to get more out of that after this week, because other folks are going to be here. If you, if you look at our sewer fund, fund balance, right now, we got, if you take away, we have enough money to run the sewer system for a year, not take, not take it this year and not have to take in another dime, we'd be broke at the end of the year. Ironically, if you look at all your fees you're going to take in and everything else, and you figure that into what, for the year, you've got a lot of money in dollars of play. When I came back here in 2016, you had less than $300,000 in your fund balance for the sewer, you were broke. But you didn't, you didn't have, and there's-
Show me that money.
Yes. In the BATH Township sewer fund. And, and I want to be careful here, because right, I know you were on the board, it wasn't that board's fault, but you didn't do anything with the numbers for the years. I don't think you had people that really wanted to focus on the sewer system. So, so that, that's where you're at with that. So yeah, this is very important. We are in the best shape we've been since I came back here. Oh, I'm not, it's not necessarily because of me, it's just because of the way growth has taken off again, totally taken off again, we've gotten some things done. That's not what I'm saying, it's not about me, but you, you assess your best, you need to go to the next step. You need to have Baker Tilly get sent in here, we've already got them lined up, and we need to get, move forward, and we need to get this stuff figured out. It's just a big question as to bonding for and how to pay for it. That's the one thing I struggle with, Brad. I just, I have a hard time giving you 3.8 million dollars and can't get anything back from it in interest, and you're going to hang on to it for 30 years.
Totally understand.
But I gotta believe that there's a, there's something out there for this, because we talked about this, you know, when he was here, and we weren't quite ready. Well, we are ready now. It's, it's a perfect time, really, if you think about it. We're going to come out of our, our audit here this week, and we're going to have them numbers, we're going to have everything we need to know as far as what our fund balances are. They, they did rough numbers when they were here before, and they said, you're right on, right on the edge, well, $107,000 a year, yeah, that's right on edge. Well, we got a little money in our fund balance, but that's, that's what it is. I, I told myself I was going to vote against this tonight, but then I thought, I thought about this all weekend. I thought about, I thought it's not the right thing to do. We sat on that guy, and whoever's been on board, he took my place over there, but, but this is my place here, figuring finances of this thing, and to figure that, to look at the history of this thing. So yeah, I think this, trying to answer your question, this is the best financial solution for what we're going to do here. We need to follow through, we need to do the next step. We have a sewer master plan being worked on, Superintendent Hill Grant is working on. You have more REUs that's going to be available by this. And we, we know what some other projects we're going to do to help make this more efficient and give us more REUs, and our extra plant study is going to come back. So going forward, we've got a pretty good idea of how much money we want to bond for. We know we have at least, last year, we had at least one sewer fund bond that's refunded for right now, can be resaled, that's the same thing as refinancing a bond. That's a good thing. And we can, we can look at this, and as well, I believe we're going to qualify for an SRF if we choose to do a master plan upgrade or whatnot, or even this bond for this project. So there might be overlapping circumstances. I heard the lady saying that she was a master's degree in public finance and all that. I picked up on that. She's probably, she probably could have been so crazy here, probably tell her what could be done, what couldn't be done with that. I've got a lot of years of working with this stuff, but it's, it's a tough thing. It's the hardest thing I've ever seen here, this township, this thing, what you're going to do now. This is going to be, the thing is going to be here for 30 years. We've never had debt here for that. We've never had that much debt at all. And there's really not a lot of debt, but it's a long time because of the, we love the fund balance. But that answered your question, Dr. Wilson?
No, that's very helpful, thank you.
I have two questions. One, does it have to be 30 years? Can it be? Because my understanding is it can be 20. Now, obviously, that would be more expensive, but with the interest and et cetera, would be probably. Two, my, my statement is, from what I've read from your piece that you gave us, or, you know, the memo, that's the best thing that could happen to BATH. Your upgrades because of the water flow, or because of what would be happening. And what I still don't understand, when you said BATH in '72, where was it going? I mean, when you flush a toilet, it goes to you, so-
Yeah. So there was a plant, original plant there, it was the Oakland County plant.
It was Oakland County.
It was Dewitt Township and, and BATH Township together.
Now that rings a bell, okay.
And so that, that's where it went.
Yeah.
We still have a lot of that old infrastructure there, but the, the plan itself was commenced and actually put in operation in '80, and that was after the Articles incorporation of 1975.
Well, the upgrades that you mentioned in here, and I sat down and went through this and listed them, you know, one through six, for your upgrades that we're having, really is a plus for BATH. In fact, it creates, you know, I know at one time we talked about we needed one more person because of the capacity-
Sure.
-that we were, you know, giving to you. Now I, I don't understand, I mean, I'm not, it's not that I don't understand, I'm not quite sure of the additional that we need, even though we're in a minority when it comes to that compared to Dewitt, because of the upgrades that you've made. There's so much quicker, so much faster, so much more that we'll be able to do. I don't see a downside, frankly, even with a bonding. And I understand what Treasurer's saying, I get that, but as I'm reading this, I'm looking and trying to figure out, where are we as a community going to have a negative? And I'm not really seeing one, so I'm not sure unless I'm missing it.
I, I, you know, I would like to sit here and, and tell you, you know, today, it could be a different day if a past plan might have been different, but ultimately, I can tell you that, and that would be semi cowardly. We're here to deal with what we got to deal with moving forward.
Yeah.
I don't, I think this is the best option. I think the SCUMA board did a fantastic job and took its time, except this is a multi-year process to get required a day. We could have been having this conversation with double this number, but they took the time. They didn't just settle with, oh, okay, that's what we got to do. They dug in and, and spent a little more time, spent a little more effort, spent a little more money to cut this thing in half, to get what we need for the communities moving forward. And to answer your original question, sorry Supervisor, but yes, there is a 20-year option. SCUMA's Budget and Finance Committee, which is formulated of five members, felt at this time, we can still change that.
Sure.
But it was felt this is the most affordable option in the original submitter. We don't, we can change that all the way up to the signing, closing date of that loan.
So we can go 25?
Uh, no, it's only 20 or 30.
30.
That's it. That's the two options you have. And Treasurer Wisswasser is correct, is you, there is no option to pay it off early. It's not like a traditional mortgage or loan. You are stuck with that payment, and stuck's the wrong word, but the reality is you are making that payment-
That's a good word.
-you know, for the next 20 or 30 years. There is no benefit for early payoff, and a lot of this has to do with the bond payment back to the state. The state does not want to deal with additional funds, and where do they go, and who's getting interest, who doesn't? They're bonding for the money for us, and then in turn, paying it back. So it's just easier for them, so however, where it shakes out. Talking to Treasurer, that was verbatim, for now.
Sorry.
So I have a question, Treasurer Wisswasser. It appears that we're prepared to move forward on this. Is that your opinion at this time?
Yes.
Okay. So I need the numbers.
And, and it's also my opinion and my hope that this board agrees and along with Superintendent Hill Grant, that we're going to do the next step, and we're going to work with our bond council, that we're going to figure that, ours all of it out, for the best, for the, what the township would be for the township as far as cash flow and timing. I guess that's more important than anything. You've got $850,000 worth of bonds you pay here. This is going to make it to, take you up to $2 million, and then plus you have a million dollars' worth of treatment cost that you pay, like about 1.3, 1.4, you pay for the, for the, every month, you pay 87,000 dollars. Oh, well, I mean, it, it's an expensive process, folks, and if it's taking care of, and if it's, everything works right, it's fine. If you have a hiccup in the economy, you have a hiccup in REUs or whatever, and you have to deal with it. Here's the bottom line, everybody should know this. A lot of township paid for theirs, I'll tell them to tell them, they paid for theirs on their general fund for years, because they subsidized it, because they didn't make enough money under, under sewer fund. During the darkest days and hardest hours of BATH Township, we've never done that. We've never asked somebody outside the sewer service area to take and pay any kind of fees for the sewer system, sanitary sewer system. We continue that. We don't want to spend your fund balance, and we have a healthy fund balance in our general fund, but you wouldn't want to have to spend general fund money on the sewer. You should make the sewer system pay for itself and be done. Along with that, we have to do the right things, too.
All right. Thank you.
I got my hand up.
Ding ding.
Ding ding. This total cost per REU calculation, is that based on the 798 new REU or all of our REU?
Oh, okay. So if you're looking at just, that is currently today.
Oh. Up here where it says the 20-year versus the 30-year?
Yep. So what you're looking at there is total cost over the life of the loan.
Correct.
So this is my working document, so I apologize, this wasn't real. So over the life of that loan, each REU at current amount. So this is a predicted amount, additional amount. This is the 4,337 REUs you have right now. Sorry, I might be off one or two, but that's over just that amount, not the increase that you're looking to get, so not the additional 798 additional.
Why wouldn't you include that in the calculation?
Because I was looking at the impact today.
Okay.
It was just to show you, okay, because I don't know what the predicted future would be, and if you're going to get those REUs coming as cap fees or not, I don't know. So it was just unknown today.
Just because you get the 700 available doesn't mean they all get developed and assigned immediately, so you don't get revenue on those until they're actually used.
Yeah, I mean, it was better sort of over time, though, if we're paying off the loan over time.
Yeah. No, it was just a worst-case scenario. This is my, like I said, this is my working document, so- This is my, like I said, this is my working document, so the R U stuff came into play as just me looking at, okay, what is the true impact for the community, and how would I look at that as, you know, I sit on a board myself, uh, for the community I live in, and I would want to know that, and, because that's a big piece of this, right? Uh, so, it was more, like I said, this is a working document that, uh, Mr. Treasure, uh, Mr. Wishwasser and I talked about, uh, on Friday, and I happily shared with him that he thought it would be, uh, and I thought it'd be valuable for you all folks to have it tonight.
Thank you.
Keep in mind one thing, is that when your, when your capacity goes up, if you gain a thousand more R U's, your processing cost is gonna go up as well.
Yeah.
Uh, that number's not reflected here, but, but, that that's gonna happen, but, uh, money, growth cost money.
It also gives you money.
That's correct.
So, ying and yang.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, folks, appreciate your time.
Thank you. If we have a word, we'll ask you back. All right, we're gonna take, uh, let me just double check here, number fourteen.
Oh, we got more on that?
No, no, it's in the next discussion.
It was a discussion item, but-
It was just a discussion. I thought he said he had to have it.
I asked him first. No, by the end of April.
Yeah, so next, or next week.
It's, it's up to you folks, whatever you're comfortable with, but I, we'll need to have it, uh, by end of month.
Yeah, so, April eighteenth.
Is there any reason we shouldn't vote on this?
Yes, because you should put it down for items for information. And we already adopted the agenda, so you'll vote on it on the eighteenth, which is-
But you still can change it.
You didn't change.
You still can change it.
Go sliding it down.
I have a question, though.
For who?
I guess for Steve, he's my, he's my guru.
Sorry.
If we would vote this down, does that, what does it do? Nothing?
If you vote it down, you know, there's, there's two ways of looking at it, you already been outvoting because of-
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm-
...the stature and the glory, but here's the other thing you might wanna think about, you yourselves are gonna take and apply for an S R F funding, and then those in the audience who may have done this before may know this as well, but this is not a good thing to do. If you're not gonna take and support one for your, for your constituent municipalities that once you're a member of, then how is that, that people at the state involved, but how are they gonna look at the one that you go back and ask for one for yourself?
Okay.
And, and, and that's the thing, you're doing this, uh, uh, for what's good for entire communities, and the states look, is gonna look at this and they're gonna say, I don't know, I'm guessing they're gonna look at this and they're gonna say, we, 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 you know, we're, we're, we're thinking maybe things, this looks like these four municipalities are lurking together, and we get a lot of bang for our buck, and look at all the good we're gonna do for our constituents, and we're gonna approve this, so that, that would be my way of thinking about it. Uh, I would certainly lobby my state representatives and people like that, if I was gonna take a lot something like that, but that, that's, that would be what I would think would be good about it.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, it's, it's, oh, this is being done right, we're do, we're doing the right things here, uh, it's scary, but we're doing the right thing.
There's another question. Yes, please.
I'm sorry, can I just add one thing to this, uh, to the point of question, because of what you're in, Trusty Ruth can say. Uh, our, the communities themselves all have different financial positions, and I will state that, uh, there is communities that could pay for theirs with their sewer fund, um, wholly upfront, but they also chose for the very same reasons as we've pointed out, that this is the best option, to go about it as a regional project, and support each other, and I would hold for that. So, if there was other communities, I, I think that shows good faith, and that's, that's important to have.
And one more thing, the Southern Cook Communist Utility Authority, one of the wards, for being one of the best, um, authorities, was the state for being together, all four members from the state, which is gonna hang them all, but, I mean, uh, that, that's the reason why, uh, they did that, is because they worked together so well. There was one other, incidentally, there was one other project over there that was added on to it, two thousand and six, you did a plan expansion, and all four municipalities took and saved their money, and, and as an agreement, we all agreed to, and we paid cash for that one.
Yep, that was the BioSalts, that was-
That's correct.
That, that program, that particular process was never touched in the original nineteen eighty project, that was still part of the old nineteen sixties plant of Claytown, so that's one thing, for a reason nineteen eighty, they did not expand on, so they didn't, they built that new BioSalts facility, developed, tried to develop the city.
And that was, that was what they gotta work for that year, they gotta work for that for, for money, meaning, um, people minded and wanting to take and pay cash, and that's a lot of money, but it was, it was, it was a lot, I'm back home to share that one, it's a different amount of dollars, and, and, you know, we paid for that, but just as what, you can just imagine what their share was, but, but, I mean, that's, that was done, and, so, so that's another reason why you would do this, uh, because of the history, what we've had here.
It's good for Bath.
It is, it's good for Bath, and it's good for our neighbors, and, and, it's good for everybody.
All right, we've got fourteen, new business, the, I was, actually, we have a resolution, and I think we continue to hold back some comments back to Chairman Gaimin.
Yes, thank you. Um, we received a request from the Greater Lansing Food Bank for us to approve a resolution. They have applied for a charitable gaming license for their fourteenth annual empty plate event, uh, to take place here in the near future, which is one of their largest, um, annual fundraising events, and they need a, a resolution from us, uh, that they are recognized as a nonprofit organization operating in Bath Charter Township.
Right, any questions?
I have a question. Are the opening up for Chris Newford?
Maybe just that evening. It's actually a public, it's actually a public event, so, yeah, it is a public event, yes, so, I think it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a ticket.
And it's happening at the facility?
Uh, I believe so.
Good job, isn't it? All right, ready for, um, someone's gonna make motion?
I'll move to approve the request from the Greater Lansing Food Bank to be recognized as a nonprofit organization operating in Bath Charter Township for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
Second.
Mr. Elmer Agi?
Yes.
Mr. Bency?
Yes.
Mr. Wishwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Roscrans?
Yes.
Mr. Ifeunzblis?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the second one.
Life doesn't stop.
I was just gonna say, is that kind of an interesting?
Do you want me to show you how that sounds?
Here, I got a hammer here.
It's got a different alarm, and that different alarm, I would answer.
So, that's on the, we get, what if it's tiny, do you wanna vote? Yes, I do, I wanna vote, but I'd like to do it without.
You would?
Yeah. Stick it to the pocket.
We'll be close, vote.
Sure, Trusty Bency, whatever it is, all right, let's take a vote. Well, the second, is it?
Start here, the gaming.
Already voted? No, we haven't. Did we vote on the gaming?
We just voted on that.
So, all right, I'm on the second one, agreement, thank you. Thanks for the improvement for the roads. No wonder I'm looking at the roads, boy.
Okay. Thank you, when we went through our twenty twenty-two budgeting process, we allocated four hundred thousand dollars, uh, to that line item for our roads in the D P W budget. Uh, to date, you have approved a chloride budget for fifty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. The Millenfield project that we could afford this year, based on what was recommended by the Clinton County Road Commission, was to Millenfield Bonnie Meadows subdivision, uh, point four nine miles, for a cost of one hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Your approval, um, would be that we could move forward with that, and we would sign the contract and forward that on to Clinton County Road Commission.
Them are different numbers than they give us.
Um, so, they included a twenty percent contingency, they indicated they would speak to me before any contingency was, um, spent.
It's a ten percent.
Okay.
So, there's a twenty percent, not a ten percent?
I believe he told me twenty.
Oh.
Um, so, that would be twice thirteen.
I have something to give you, yes?
I'm sure. Can you go down, go in there?
Yeah, just one moment, please, sir, is that, uh, Trusty Rosecrans? I apologize, there is a ten percent of the total contract amount, we feel that is currently, but with the current supply chain issues, it would be a good idea to plan for some increase in cost, we will not use this without speaking to the township beforehand, and only if it is necessary to complete a project. My apologies, no percent.
There you go.
Okay, 'cause they told us a hundred and fifteen thousand for Bonnie Meadows, they told us sixty thousand for gravel, uh, Unistreet, five thousand, five hundred, uh, gravel, uh, mowing the gravel roads was four thousand, overband was thirty thousand, uh, brush spraying, especially on the corners, was, uh, seven thousand, and chloride was sixty thousand.
Is that what we got on the phone?
That's what, huh?
Did we get that in the fall?
Yeah, well, no, this I got the, the county the other day.
Okay, the other day, this month?
Uh, yeah, we went up to the county road commission and had a meeting with them.
This month?
Yeah. Well, no, not this month, last month.
Okay, so that would've been March.
Keep forgetting this week's answer. Yes?
They also told us that, um, their costs were coming in thirty percent higher this year than they were last year.
So, are those figures from last year?
This is the figures that they give me at our meet, well, this was last year's figures, but they given to me up to the county this year.
But they're still coming in thirty percent over those numbers.
Yeah, what it looks like.
Yes, Christie.
Uh, so, I'm sorry if I missed talking about this project before, the, the roads in disrepair, like, why this particular road? I know there's a development going on out here.
Um, so, the foundation, it's imperative that you keep the, to my understanding, that you keep the foundation of the road, um, intact, even though there is ongoing construction. Um, once you lose the base of your road, it becomes much more expensive to fix and/or maintain it. So, this was one of the areas that we looked at, we looked at, I think, um, the downtown area was one of the, one of the projects, and then there was, um, one other project, I can't, I think it was the Meadows was four hundred, possibly a thousand dollars, so-
Modern, forty-five thousand.
There were several projects to look at, but this one was within our reach with the current budget that we have.
So, there's already a road there for this new development?
No, this is an old development.
This is a Millenfield, right?
The Millenfield.
They're gonna take out the old asphalt and put a new one.
No, I understand that, I guess I don't understand-
We've been holding off.
-that they're, they're building around this old road for the new development?
No, they, that, the old, it's been there for years. We've held off for about four or five years of redo, redoing the road, because they were doing work in there on building houses, and the county felt that, uh, it would last, no.
So, that road's been there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that, and then they just built the houses around that road, right?
Right, out of Bowser.
So, that, that was not understood, that tomery or whatever, devil, call that, it's too, too long, they don't match, but the one we're talking about, I guess, it goes up to Peacock, and then it, then it goes east.
But they've been building houses on it, so, uh, probably reluctant to fix it, that number of years ago, it's been done with construction.
Been there about thirty years, or a little better.
The road has.
That, yes, the subdivision. At one time, there was a-
Activity on that subdivision.
Huh? Oh, yeah, they've been for years.
Those are old houses that are thirty years old on that?
Some of them are.
I didn't know, I thought it was all new.
In the back, there was a peat plant at one time.
It's all old, yeah, it does.
And, uh-
You're not talking about the new, you're not talking about the one off of Misaki, you're talking about the one on Peacock, right? And it's been there for thirty years?
It's off of, uh, Green, in that Green Road?
Mm-hmm. I was gonna say, we've got Coleman, Peacock, Peacock goes up, and then it's-
This is on the south side of the expressway.
Yeah, it's a green house. There's an area that is not- Oh, I'm gonna differ, some, this says Peacock and Coleman, it says off Coleman and So, am I in the wrong?
You're in the wrong pew.
Or did it help us out? Are we in the wrong, and I'm in the wrong, section? So, if it's Coleman and Peacock, that road has been there thirty years, the one that is off Peacock, which is now-
Coleman Road goes south of the freeways, is that?
Oh, I know, but this, but it says location, Peacock and Coleman.
Yes, well, it was, Peacock one time was-
Okay, I'm in the wrong.
Was not a road, it was, uh, the county didn't maintain it, and, uh, it went back to, um, it, it was a road, but there was trees and stuff in it.
So, where is?
Right down there by the township line.
Which is?
On Coleman.
And Peacock.
I remember right neighborhood, when you get down to Misaki.
Right.
It's in the behind that.
Yeah, exactly, that's north of that.
That's correct.
But if I'm understanding what's being said, there are houses that have been there thirty years, I guess I didn't know.
There were some up there, there were there.
On, on that-
They've been building some more back there, the last one.
Tobre, that road, which road are we talking about?
Well, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm-
Okay. Well, what road is that? What, what road is Bonnie Meadows on? George, George.
Hey, please, Chief, Fire Chief.
Bonnie Meadows subdivision comes off of Coleman Road, there's three entrances, entrance-
Here.
Peacock, Misaki, Cynthia.
And Cynthia, exactly.
And then, you are correct, there is a, that's Hormiston, that goes kind of northeast from, um, Misaki.
'Cause Misaki, it goes this way, and then what we're looking at for paving is north of Misaki, right? Yeah, this is, okay, I got it, and this, so, what we're saying is there's homes, 'cause this is the new, so, where, this is Bonnie Meadows up here, right, up here, exactly. So, what we're looking at then, Bonnie Meadows, is this new development, and yet, their houses have been there thirty years, correct? So, I'm in the right spot, I just-
No, it's the, it's the road itself alligator now, if you take, uh, Coleman Road to Cynthia Lane, uh, Mancity.
Right. Obviously, yes.
I'm, I'm sorry. George Baker, Chair of the Road Committee.
George, would you come up to the microphone, please, that'll help. Here's, Cynthia, I know Cynthia, and the new piece is-
It's, it's the old piece that's, that runs east and west on the backside of that, it's kind of broke up a little bit in between, but if you take Coleman Road, uh, east, out of town, to the township line, there's a road that turns left, heads north Cynthia Lane, and that goes-
Yeah, Cynthia's down here, Cynthia's over here.
And that goes into those roads that need repair.
So, it's not, so, what we're looking to repair, that's that new subdivision, right?
Not the new part, no.
Yeah, we- 'Cause Misaki, wait a minute, this is the new subdivision. Okay, so, what we're looking at to re, to repair is not Coleman and Peacock.
It's Rodman and Miss, no, however you say, uh, Misaki, or, I think it's Misaki.
Okay.[1753.83]
Them are the two roads that will be addressed.
So it would be Misaki.
And I think.
And Tor, Tor, Tormiston?
Thank you. Whatever they-
I don't show that on my map, or on my, on my list, but it's, it's that subdivision there.
So it's not, yeah, do, because that's confusing. Okay, so it's off Misaki, not Coleman and Peacock.
What subdivision is off?
Uh-huh, yes, this section right here.
Okay.
And this section right here.
Oh, this right here?
Here and here.
Radman?
Rodman and Misaki.
It's Radman and Misaki.
Okay.
Oh.
Because they have been, have some issues on Misaki.
So Radman runs right down?
Yep, exactly. Okay, so you're looking at the Rodman?
Yes.
And Misaki going in the other direction, towards Peacock.
Yes. Any other questions for me?
So that whole neighborhood is called Bonnie Meadows?
Yeah.
That's what I guess I didn't know.
Oh, I didn't know that either.
Okay.
That was named after Otto Bowser's wife.
What was her name?
Bonnie. I knew we were gonna say that.
All right, that helps unanimously, because I'm looking at Peacock and Coleman north, but that's not correct. What it is, is you're talking about Rodman and Misaki. And they, you know, need some help. Okay. Thank you, George. That helps unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir?
Did, uh, county get a hold, you, they were supposed to, the week after we were there, get the bids on how much it was gonna cost for a yard of blacktop?
Yes.
Did they haven't got back with you yet?
I have nothing else to, to date.
Okay.
Doug tells me there's more forthcoming, but this is all they have prepared to date for me.
Did they ever send you the minutes of the meeting?
I believe I did get those.
Okay. Did we ask her to send them to you? We didn't have anybody wanting to take them.
So I'll make the motion to approve the improvements, uh, for the Bonnie Meadows subdivision. Sorry?
But not subdivision, Peacock and Coleman. Within the Bonnie Meadows. Within? Yeah, within. Okay. Let's see, make sure that's, okay, right, okay. Does everybody understand? No, no, is everybody understand my, okay, let's go. Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Westwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Uh, yes, as long as it's Robinson and Misaki.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fiumas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmarigi?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent, vote, I'm sorry.
Uh, we sat on this road for a few years and our first bid was 95,000. And, uh, these three, last three or four years, uh, it's gonna get up to 124. There's Joe 15% a year.
Oh, I take a question, Mike. If you're able to, I'll just leave that.
So you should expect your costs to increase like Trustee Rosecrans, just every year that goes by, things will be costing.
Your contingency, I didn't ask, does that go back to the road commission? If they don't use the 10,000 or 13,000?
No, we just don't pay it.
Oh.
They would bill us, if they were going to need the 10%, they would bill us.
So this dollar amount comes out of the 400,000.
Correct.
But if they don't use the 10%, that doesn't go back into the, okay, no, I got it.
The bill will be less, the bills, yep.
Thank you.
Karen, have we approved the graveling and overband and their, all of that already?
Uh, the only things that you've approved are chloride now in this contract. So no, you have not approved anything else.
All right, then, I, I'd like to make a motion that, um, pe, graveling Peacock Road, which was, they give us a 60,000, um, Unistreet-
I don't have any contracts yet.
As we say, that's not-
Yeah, but we still gotta, haven't we got a, okay, and before the contract get here? Let them know that we want to do?
No, when they, when they give me contracts, I bring them to you.
Right, then you will keep the contract for-
So they know we want to do these things?
Yeah, that, we told them up there, uh, three weeks ago.
I asked if there were any more contracts when he gave me this one and he said no this time.
Where George, oh, George, would you call the county and ask them?
She's got it right, when they, when they get the contracts ready, they'll get with her.
Okay.
We'll have another meeting yet, too.
Okay.
So that'll be brought up?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Superintendent, report.
Thank you. Um, so at this time, um, I do, we still do not have a senior center coordinator hired. Um, we were unable to fill the position from the candidates that applied last time and we have reposted that for additional candidates. In the meantime, our dishwasher, Julie Allen, has, I, what you see, she retired, um, even though she's still a spry young, um, lady, she retired and is spending time with her husband at home who's had some health issues as of late. So we no longer have a dishwasher. We do have someone that is filling in that position at this time. So at this time, that is all covered. Um, the coordinator position is being covered to this, at this time, by Linda Barago, who is familiar with the processes and procedures, um, and is still collecting the money as she always did. Um, we have allowed, uh, hand and foot to commence, um, them playing that game. Um, we will not be able to let them play bingo until we have a coordinator in place because that's very staff intensive. And then we will be looking for someone to step up and coordinate Uker, um, so that Uker can return on Mondays. Um, and, um, the, the senior center meals still are doing very well. Um, they have between 60 and 70 people, between people eating on site and about 20 people taking meals to go. They're not, some people are still not comfortable eating at the center, so they come in and get their meal and they take it home and they eat it there. So we have a much larger takeout. Before it was people that would eat their meal and then want more for later. Um, now there are still people because of COVID that would prefer not to eat in public with other people, so they're taking, they're coming to get those and they take those home. So we continue to transition the senior center, um, due to COVID, and what we're telling, still taking safety precautions, still considering the mask wearing, um, at this time, they are still wearing masks, but we continue to watch that, um, for the updates that we receive from the state and the CDC. Um, because they are a high, um, vulnerability population, um, we continue to watch those numbers very closely for them. Um, so they're not, we're not putting them at risk, um, but right now, we, we still have a mask mandate in place. Please.
Uh, how, is the senior center coordinator full-time?
No, it is not.
What's the FTE?
It's 20 hours per week, I believe.
Okay, and what, what are we posting at? Ki, the money?
Uh, 14 to 16 dollars an hour.
Oof, that's gonna be tough.
Yeah. Um, ARPA, there will be some ARPA mandated reporting. Um, when I return, I'll be on vacation from, um, this Thursday after the audit until next Thursday, just before Good Friday. Um, and once I return, we will get hard at work at that, although we have not spent any of those funds. We are still required to report on what we've received to date and what we've done in those funds, so we will complete those tasks. Um, I will continue to work with the road commission on obtaining our, um, contracts, so that our roads are taken care of this year. Um, we continue work on Webster, the Webster Road Corridor, Safe Routes to School, um, hoping for that, those two projects to go hand in hand. And we've been alerted to other opportunities for funding that might be able to make, um, more possible in that area as well, so we're looking into those. And, um, like Steve said, we've been hard at work getting, um, your own financials done and supporting that process, um, for our accountants. Auditors will be here this week, so the front office, um, will be very busy. Um, we are to have new carpet installed hopefully next week in the township, so we're making modifications and adjusting schedules so that we can, um, have that, hopefully not interrupt any of our work that we do here. Um, thank you for your patience tonight. I know we tackled a lot of big issues, but, um, it's, it's a lot with the police and fire mileage, with the sewer changes, um, we continue work on the, on the sewer master plan, so, um, the sewer is probably one of the biggest things that I work with constantly and I always just think I'm one, um, bad pipe away from a catastrophe, so, um, I like to spend a lot of time looking at ways that we can make sure that, um, system is, is, um, as good as it can be. So I appreciate your support and that. Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it. All right. All right, go on to item 16, which is public statement two, and this statement can be anything. All right, oh, George.
I'll try to make this quick. I, uh, I wanted to publicly thank those that work here in the office and on these committees and on our township that put in all this time. I know some of these meetings have been going long and whatnot. I sure appreciate it as a member of the township and those that serve on some of the committees, you know, that, uh, the newer committees too that are volunteered, that we've got new volunteers, so that's greatly appreciated. Also, uh, to reference, uh, Ryan about the roads, we get a, uh, baser rating on the roads that helps us determine what roads. We have roads that don't get done because we have a $400,000 budget and a million dollars worth of projects, so we have to pick and choose also, you know, the, the flow of the roads, how the traffic is, the speed of the road, um, like this year with, uh, Safe Routes to School, you know, you work with that type of thing, what kind of pipes are getting fixed, so, you know, you might do Herbison Road instead of Howell Road, or Howell Road instead of Herbison Road. Try not to focus on one part of the county or township and not the other part of the township. So it's a, it's a big balancing act. They use a mix of fixes, is what we call it in, uh, the committee, to try to come up with, uh, a good balance of repairs. So that's how that project got put off, put off, put off. They were doing construction in there. The county didn't want to go in and, um, work on roads that were under, that traffic was, heavy traffic was on, so, you know, they pushed it off for, so that's, that's how that one came to be, uh, and that, and that's just kind of a general idea of how we get, the roads that we get, and basically comes recommended from them. Um, and then, uh, thank you for those that have, uh, worked here a long time. Appreciate Steve and the, the treasurer's department that's worked real hard with, uh, our superintendent and those behind the scenes, and I just greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
George, do you have access to the road level baser data?
Yes, we get that in our packet.
Is that something that you could share with you, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That would be nice for all of us to have. So if you get it, that's that, we appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? All right, we're good. So board member comments? Start with Ryan. Whoop, Trustee Spiegel Bliss.
Uh, I am unprepared, I have no comments. I didn't know you were gonna call me first.
Trustee Rosecrans?
George, we missed you at the meeting up at the county. Nothing else.
I just want to remind everybody that Tom King Junk Day is gonna be April 24th. Um, registration is started.
23rd year?
Sorry, 23rd. Registration is started, um, the senior pickup is-
April 23rd?
May 24th.
April. It's just in a couple of weeks. So we've had a lot of people registering, so just make sure you share it with community members.
Yes, it's coming too fast. All right, for me, the only comment I have is Jeremy, glad you're here at Tolliver.